I was trying to take all of them.
All right. I want to go.
All right. Those can be.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the central with liberty and justice for all.
Berlin, Bogus, Paige.
Here.
Bainer.
Here.
Cummins.
Here.
Brad.
Here.
All right. Um. Is there any public comment? Yeah. Fine. Um, all right, we have our consent agenda, um, which includes the regular village board meeting November twelfth along with the executive session meeting. Minutes for November the twelfth and the approval of the bills that were found listed on your agenda. So any questions or anything, or if not, is there a motion?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Paige.
Yes.
Bainer.
Yes.
Cummins.
Yes.
Brad. Yes. Motion passed, Laura.
Okay, um, on the new business and Susan is here for presentation. Um, and so I will, um, turn it over to her, she's got, um, something she's been working on for quite some time, actually. So, um, I will let you, um, you can do it from there, um.
Sure. Is it all right if I just stand here?
That's fine.
All right, so thank you for the introduction, because I, um, was a former.
Sorry about that. Okay. I'm sorry to throw you off there.
All right. I, uh, first met Tammy as an employee of Champaign County Regional Planning Commission and then later with Champaign County Planning and zoning. So, uh, nice to see you all again, partners who met me before and many of your followers. So, uh, thank you. And in twenty nineteen, I formed after a task force recommendation, a task force facilitated by the Regional Planning Commission. I formed a nonprofit called Champagne County Environmental Stewards. And so the primary mission of this nonprofit is to responsibly manage solid waste materials in a better way than have been managed to date. And that means finding improved ways for residents to handle problematic types of materials such as household hazardous wastes, food scrap, composting hasn't really started in earnest yet in this county. And even glass bottle recycling needs to be improved. There are so many things happening now and so many possible ways to make the situation better. This, that's the main mission of this nonprofit. So, um, slide. So you can see that, or it's essentially a material that described household hazard, what is that? And I'm going to talk tonight about a project that this nonprofit has taken on in since twenty twenty one to establish a household hazardous waste collection facility. So household hazardous waste, uh, we, we purchase as, as consumers hundreds of different types of products. They're very toxic, flammable, explosive, corrosive, just like the hazardous waste that industry uses, which is highly regulated. But hazardous waste that households have and store is not highly regulated out, it's not regulated at all. So. Um, that's what household hazardous waste is, it's dangerous and it represents, I'm going to ask you to advance the slide. So improper management of household hazardous waste, if it's improperly stored, it's, it can be a threat to public health and the environment. So household hazardous waste can contaminate our soil, groundwater, lakes and streams. In twenty eighteen, you may recall the Mohammed Opera Task Force Report uh, included household hazardous waste as one of six potential contamination threats to the Mohammed Opera. And we all know how important the Opera is as a sole source of our water for, for many of us across fifteen counties. So also household hazardous waste can result in accidental poisonings and other medical problems for people, pets exposed to these substances. Also firefighters are exposed to hazardous materials when responding to fires and, and household hazardous waste can amplify the impacts of a fire. And highly toxic smoke can happen and, and things like that, damage to residential septic systems. So, uh, there's a whole litany of problems that these kinds of materials can cause. Please advance the slide. So residents across East Central Illinois lack a convenient collection option. I, I like to show this because it's like, oh, the history in, in nineteen ninety, actually the first one day collection happened here in Champagne County back in nineteen eighty nine or something. So this just shows how often the Illinois EPA offered the option of a one day collection here in Champagne County. And you can see I was getting pretty, it's, it's always been erratic, uh, but we waited for years in some cases and it, it got to be ridiculous in twenty nineteen. Seven years we were waiting to get a one day collection. So at that point, I was fortunate to be on a task force uh, that the I E P A headed up, Material Management Advisory Committee. And, and I really pushed for a solution because it was just not workable, we never knew when we were going to be selected and so that's like totally inconvenient and unpredictable. So, uh, fortunately after twenty nineteen, the Illinois EPA restructured their one day system and we were selected to get a one day collection every year, so it's been much better since then, as far as one day collections. So. Um, let me get to my notes so I don't deviate too much. You can please advance the slide. So the annual one day collection, I don't know, have any of you had a chance to get, get out to one of those yet? You have to sign up and online and register to get a fifteen minute time slot. They're set up in the parking lot to offer the last couple of years at State Farm Center. And at best, these kind of collections can address and service one percent of the area population households. Then that means like eight hundred households or maybe a thousand households. And so we did a feasibility study, our, our nonprofit did in twenty twenty one and realized this area could be much better, uh, yeah, as far as providing this opportunity and option to residents with a permanent collection facility, it's like a no brainer. Please advance the slide. So here we are, this map just shows it all, uh, there's only five facilities here in Illinois and they're all like a two and a half hour to three hour drive from Champagne County. And, you know, many residents are not able to participate in the one day collections, they're either on vacation or they're just not willing to sign up and go to a parking lot, uh, on a one day of the year kind of thing. And, and people pass away and things like that and they have to clean out their house, houses and sell the house and they have to get rid of the stuff stored in the house, so that's a problem. And with a permanent collection facility, we estimate that we can reach out to at least ten percent of the population each year and, and drive that ratio up all the way up to like fourteen percent each year instead of just one percent max. All right, I think I'm done with that. And this is an overall project timeline, hard to read maybe, but, uh, we're presently now in our, in our capital campaign, that's why I'm here tonight to ask the village for contribution, capital contribution to this project. And, and the amount they're going to ask for is twenty thousand dollars payable, uh, over the next two years. Because this is like a pledge kind of system where you can pay half and then pay it a half the next year if it's easier, or you can pay it all at once. I mean, I'm just telling you about those options that are presented to all, all people that we ask and all places that we ask for a gift. So, um, this just gives you an overview of the timeline, we expect that if things go well with our capital campaign that we can actually open the facility in April of twenty twenty six. Now this would be a part time year round facility, open at least three times a month, we hope. And so that would be like thirty six times a year of options available to our residents instead of just once a year. And we think that's, that would be just the way to go. That's what it means. So this just gives you information about the project cost estimate of two million eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have raised forty one percent of that to date. And if you scroll down a little bit, you can see annual, annual operational costs are estimated at one hundred and seventy five thousand a year. And then a different kind of category of processing and transportation costs, the annual amount is shown and that amount is what the Illinois EPA would, that we expect that the Illinois EPA will provide as it does to the other five facilities in this. They, they sign on as the primary generator of the hazardous waste and then they take care of transportation costs and they hire a hazardous waste contractor each year, service these facilities around the state. And I want to mention during this slide that the annual operational costs, uh, we expect eventually to equitably divide that amongst all area governments if needed. So far we have commitments from the Urbana-Champaign sanitary district for an annual contribution toward capital. And then once the facility is built, they're going to switch that annual contribution to, to be for operational costs, but it, it won't cover that entire amount yet. So we're going to be asking, coming back after we, after we get through the capital campaign, we'll focus on operational costs if we need to. Please proceed. So we were very fortunate last year to identify a site, piece of property and purchase it. Does anybody recognize this, you probably looked at the brochure and know that this is on Saline Court, North, on North Lincoln in Urbana. So there's a waste transfer station, that's where all these trucks are over to the side. And across the street, there's a place called Henson's, it's a construction and demo debris facility, which may be trying to get a permit to also service, serve as a transfer station. So local waste haulers all like to use this transfer station so they don't have to haul their waste collective to a landfill, saves them money. And my point here is that this is a wonderful location because it's like a waste management subdivision located in an industrial zone and with very few residents in immediate area at all, mostly industry. You can see, I show you this slide because, or we're presently also working on construction drawings within our tech and engineering firm. And this is to share the, the idea of how the site will be laid out. We'll have a double wide entrance at the one end, the north end, where drive up under, uh, port corchere, I'm trying to think of the English word for that, an overhead, uh, weather protection, protection kind of overhead barrier and that's where, uh, the cars will be unloaded as they drive up. And what else can I show, show you about this, there could be pretty major loading dock, um, west side facility. And on the south, there will be room to expand in the future if ever there is a need to. Please proceed. Now this is hard to read, but I, the only point I'm going to make when I talk about this slide, this is a view of the first floor plan. And, uh, it shows different areas of the facility, it's fifty eight hundred square feet. And there's areas for a highly, you know, fire protection areas of, of the maximum type of protection you must have. And the area where those two big black, uh, squares are at the top of the screen, that's the loading dock area and outside of that, it's in, in the facility will be where we store electronics, we're also going to serve as the program collection site for the county to collect electronics from residents. So, uh, right now, you know, uh, toys, you're in the parking lot, Parkland College, those collections happen. So this facility will take over that function as well with more, more convenience, you don't have to sign up for that selection to, uh, primarily bring your televisions back. So, yeah, it's going to be a wonderful facility, we're working with a design expert who knows how to design hazardous waste facilities. So that's very nice, and he's the same person that did the feasibility study, thank you. All right, so I'm going to wind down here just by saying, there's so many things happening. Uh, in twenty twenty four, uh, the Paint Stewardship Act was amended after being passed in twenty twenty three and that's going to allow this facility and other places all through the state of Illinois to collect paint from contractors and residents for recycling. Right now, household hazardous waste doesn't consider latex paint as hazardous. So it only, uh, like hazardous waste is only considered as oil based paint. So this, this act which was passed will allow for paint manufacturers that do retail business in Illinois to help subsidize the handling and recycling of paint. And, and it's a wonderful system that will, you know, be totally convenient for across Illinois, so expected to be implemented in the next year and a half. So our facility will allow for residents to drop on all types of paint during its open hours. And also contractors will be able to do that too, we'll have to keep a separate stream for that, but. All right, also the Battery Stewardship Act passed this year and that's, that was like the fastest bill that ever passed through the Illinois General Assembly of this type because everybody recognizes the hazards with lithium batteries in their proper storage. So that's going to be another item that we collect at the facility, we're going to have a special chemical storage building for batteries. Uh, if the footprint inside the building exceeds the limitations for battery storage. So household hazardous waste is the final thing I'll, I'll mention, there's a bill that's being worked on, uh, which will be introduced in January. It's not our organization that's forming these bills, it's the Illinois Product Stewardship Council, which we support. And, and that's a statewide kind of local government, um, recycling and coordinators that feed into this and try to get these things passed to ease the burden of local governments having to have this cost to handle these materials at the end of their useful lifespan. So this, this bill will handle household hazardous waste like, uh, paint, like batteries. And it will, the manufacturers of household hazardous waste products will kick in and try to, they'll be responsible for the underflow treatment of household hazardous waste and that will ease the cost of operations and also ease the Illinois EPA's cost to operate this program. So we're very hopeful about this, only one other state has passed this bill, type of bill, and that's Vermont. So this may not go through the first year and take one to the years, but we're very hopeful. Please proceed. Yeah, and this is a rendering, you may have seen a copy of the brochure. Sort of a steel building, it is a steel, steel building and there, there's the drive up area with the overhead barrier, it's a semi transparent front. So. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to talk about this. We can mention, uh, we're asking for twenty thousand dollars payable in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six if necessary. And, um, I'll, I'll take questions if you wanted to ask questions or, um, just stand by for, for your next steps.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So will you charge them when people come in? Do you want to charge them to get rid of it based on?
There, there's no charge used with a household hazardous waste collection facility. None of the other five facilities charge Illinois residents. This, this facility, since it's supported and largely powered by the Illinois EPA, will be open to all Illinois residents. Realistically, most of the users will be in the east central Illinois area and this, you know, Champagne County area.
How many municipalities, um, similar to our, um, population have donated to this?
I've actually just started, we have a campaign leadership team and we're, we're all branching out and asking, um, different municipalities. So far we've gotten contributions from Champagne County. Uh, City of Champagne, uh, provided a contribution from their general fund. Champagne County's contribution was from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund. City of Urbana's contribution was from their American Rescue Plan Act Fund. And so I've been visiting with, uh, Saint, excuse me, Savoy, Mohammed, Tolono. And then we're going to branch out to the smaller municipalities.
When they have the collections at State Farm, do you have any idea how approximately how many people attend those?
Oh, yeah.
How many?
Yeah, yeah, that's how we gave, uh, estimated the one percent and, um, City of Champagne, uh, coordinates the, uh, online sign up so they have like our account and they, they manage the flow of people that sign up, sure, that's, that's how we, uh, went online.
But do you know how many people, like, uh, if, if it's one day where there are two hundred people that show up for the day? Are there a thousand, is it fifty?
It ranges from eight hundred and fifty to twelve hundred and fifty.
In one day?
Percent, yeah, that's the math. So I can tell you Vermillion County does that and I have to be involved with that because it's in my building or my property. And so it's usually about six hundred people that are through theirs, they don't sign up, it just, they just go through and do it that way.
What about on the, uh, recycling we do here now? I mean, I shouldn't know, but was it like five grand, eight grand, something like that?
Yeah.
You mean the dumpster day?
Yeah.
Yeah. With, that's ten, yeah, just dumpster day, we, yeah.
Right, yeah, I think very. That, then eliminate the need for that.
No, because, because this would all be, because when we take a dumpster day, it's the hazardous material, we can't take any of that.
So my, my other question was about Public Works, like what's their process for, um, getting rid of any of their hazardous waste that they have through, um, what they do? And that, you know, I was trying to understand that.
Mostly they would have motor oil and perhaps antifreeze and, um, there's, there's, I don't know what your Public Works person does, so I shouldn't be interrupting.
You could be, it's a nerd.
But, uh, usually, uh, some, some of the auto service places may take motor oil or antifreeze and they may do that, I'm not sure, I didn't.
I don't know, the Safety Clean Truck comes around, yeah, I mean, they usually, a lot of, a lot of vehicles, they come in, pick up the oil and stuff.
Yeah, Safety Clean is the only, uh, hazardous waste company around here that services, conveniently services, uh, industry and commercial. And.
I, I, I don't see how we can do it, but I'm, I love the idea, I think it's fantastic, I mean, uh, I mean, it's got to start somewhere, it's gonna, we're gonna end up doing it at some point. I personally, I don't think I could vote for it tonight, especially with the new board coming in, whatever, people like that needs to be something.
And we have so many projects going on.
Yeah.
Cost of, I think it's a, I think it's certainly a worthwhile thing.
Doesn't pay the bills, but I love it.
Thousand dollars and then Patrick continue to do it annually.
There would be no, this is a one time capital, uh, support request.
Right, but then you said after it's built, then you were good, then you were going to go back to, or maybe I misunderstood.
Right.
You're going to go back and then.
Much smaller, probably much smaller amount, if any, right, based on the population.
And then, but what if, um, because I'm assuming you're headed for a number, so if you don't get there, what?
We, we expect to get there.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're going to municipalities, we're going to, I mean, we have our capital campaign consults and we're working according to protocol for capital campaigns and thinking positively, applying state federal funds if any, inch applied for. And, yeah, we're, we're doing, going to the University of Illinois, we're going to everywhere we can possibly go, so we want to leave, we want to give you the opportunity to also support this exciting project.
Is there plans to put an incinerator out there by any chance?
Absolutely not, um, no, there's no disposition of hazardous waste on the site, it's like a transfer station. We just store it temporarily until the Illinois EPA comes with their hazardous waste contractor to take it away. So that's why it's fifty eight hundred square feet, as soon as there's enough materials for a fill semi, for example, then the Illinois EPA hazardous waste contractor will come and do a pickup. It may happen once every month, once every two months, we don't know exactly that rate.
Hey, I, I said, I, I think it's a viable program that's really super important that, you know, we have access to do, you know, getting rid of this a little more frequently than relying on the EPA to come down and set up, but, I think, um, I appreciate you bringing the information to us and I think we hang on to the information and we have it and if you could stay in touch with Joe throughout your process with the other communities and things too, and kind of let us know where you're at with that. And then we can, you know, have it in our, um, items of budgeting items and.
I mean, once the new boards install that, then maybe we do something, I don't.
Well, and I think as a progress system, we'll have more information too, to have everybody be able to, um, study and figure out and then at that point, figure out, you know, what our contribution might be able to be at that point too, so.
Yeah, I'm happy to come back, uh, your new board, whenever they have a chance to consider this, I'll keep in touch with Joe.
Have you approached, have you made presentation in any of the townships?
You know, I had a conversation with the Champagne Township Norm and I forgot his last name, I'm sorry.
And Padgett?
No, that's, that's the highway commissioner there, but Norm is somebody, oh, but anyway, he's the supervisor and he said that they could not contribute to any kind of service that's not specific to their residents. So. I'm going to go back to and, and explore that because, uh, he said he couldn't even contribute to the three.
But, yeah, I know their township budgets are a little different than.
Yeah, maybe a different structure.
I would think something like that might be worthwhile for the explorer in lieu of having to pick up an air TV or something along in the ditch out in the country.
Yeah, the problem is when people are throwing the TVs out in the ditches, aren't going to drive in and take it anywhere, that's what I think, because I think if you're responsible, you're irresponsible. You're probably exactly right, so, but.
But, yeah.
Anyway, but now if you could just keep us informed on where you're at with some of the other, uh, communities as you, uh, reach out to them and, um, maybe we'll keep that information here and.
All right.
Be able to look at it in the future.
Once you, I understand that boards change and, uh, they already, uh, made, so we hope you can consider this in form, so.
But, you know, I thank you for bringing it to our, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Bye bye. Presentation.
Well, to you, why you wrote to a big fat check.
Thank you very much, thank you.
All right, thank you, have a nice Thanksgiving.
True.
Okay, um, next item on new business is the renewal of the employees' coverages with all lines and principal. Um. It didn't look like we had much of a, we saw that Joe briefly summarized that, most all of the information's in your packet, but um, we have any questions for Joe?
There's one, uh, so, yeah, I have a requested motion and, uh, staff memo, uh, but one other area that wasn't in that memo is just swapping out our current H R A. Um, provider, we used to be with a company called, uh, B P C and then they were purchased or, um, something.
Finding is always easy.
You know, yeah.
They were purchased.
They were, they were purchased or some, something happened where they became, uh, Charms Snyder and, um, the, the, with the, uh, claim processing service that we're getting Charms Snyder isn't really all that great. Um, so there's a new company that our broker is recommending called associate and I have the the quote is same as what we currently have on the cost per, uh, participant and, um, they're, and they're based out of Decatur, yeah. So if you are okay with that, I'd like to go ahead and just transition to them as well. But otherwise I just recommend approving it and, um.
Can we ask a question? So remind me, um,
So remind me, um, what's the employee share of all of this?
They pay for dependents.
They pay for dependents.
Yeah, we pay a hundred percent.
So what I want to say is that when they start whining about um, callouts and all of that kind of thing, it's very unusual for a um, employee group this small to have a benefit like this. And it's, I think it's, they're very lucky. And I just want to make that comment about that. So I'm not saying that we go back and change any of that, but I just think that, you know, there are not very many employers that do this. So I just wanna go on record and say that for that. And then I make a motion that you approve this.
I second.
Painter?
Yes.
Comments?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Will she pass the room?
All right, uh, the next few items, um, is just kind of routine maintenance that we have to do every um, abating our, um, two different bonds. Um, so that they don't appear on our tax ledger. So if you have any questions on those two items, um, you'll do each one separately. Um, so do the first one for about bond series twenty twenty A and then.
I second. For a series twenty twenty eight.
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Painter?
Yes.
Motion pass for him?
And twenty twenty eight, I'll make a motion to pass the ordinance abating series twenty twenty eight.
Second, or go ahead, Art, I don't know, I've got it.
Okay. Brad?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Painter?
Yes.
Comments?
Yes.
Motion pass the room?
Okay, under old business, um, we actually have um, the ordinance for the raffles and the raffle licenses, um, allowing these various different programs in the village. We've never had one as large as the Queen of Hearts ever come to our community. And it's stated well that we, if we allow these things in the community. I said, Mark can maybe explain that a little bit cuz I know I questioned Mark about that because I think there was like, um, and of course, our wonderful Facebook warriors out there was apparently questioning why um, have to do anything, you know, we're, um, with with our raffles and things. But if I understand it correctly, technically by law, um, it's required, especially with one as large as the Queen of Hearts. So would you like to explain that a little bit better?
Yeah, if you wanna have a charity, um, raffle or fundraiser like that, where there's a game of chance, then you need to get one of these licenses or you are illegally gambling. Period in a sentence. So these are really easy to manage from a village standpoint. They're really, um, pretty easy to apply for and get from the charity standpoint. But there is some process to make sure that the money's counted properly and make sure that the organization has been around for a while so that you don't just have people creating things out of nothing. So, um, in the communities where we put these in, it's been a no-brainer and hasn't been a big deal whatsoever. And it's actually a service to the nonprofit community because they give some nice tools, a little tool.
Does anyone have any questions about the ordinance or? I can see arts.
No. Paige looked in my mind, I was looking just, I mean, I was reading all the the definition, everything and I thought about that. Well, I need to go ahead and start a raffle for the the nonprofit art charity, you know. But no, it's it's kind of one of the, this codifies it. Uh, it might give an opportunity to the schools to do a, uh, a raffle or something like that. And if nothing, if it doesn't work out, you know, just make a motion or move.
I, and and speed, we have the flexibility with the ordinance too on various different organizations, large, small, whatever. You can always, I mean, it's a very minimal fee to come in and get the permit from us. But we always had the option of waiting, that was for various different occasions too. So it's 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 not like we're trying to gouge anybody who's trying to do a good fundraiser for various different activities by community. So, um, so if there's no further questions or or comments, is there a motion?
That we, um, in consideration of the ordinance for providing for raffles and raffle licenses.
Second.
If Paige?
Yes.
Painter?
Yes.
Comments?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Motion pass for him?
Then I make a motion to approve the raffle license application.
Second. I was looking at her like.
Okay, painter?
Yes.
Comments?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Paige?
Yes.
Motion pass for him?
Thank you.
Um, what time, I'm gonna stay. What time?
Oh, uh, that's the last.
Yeah.
Seven, seven.
Thank you.
On that board, okay.
Oh, they'll be, they'll be.
Do the draw.
Now that this is a pass, there will be.
You're gonna do the draw at seven, right?
Right, yeah, okay. So you gotta get your tickets before then.
Um, all right, um, Joe, do you have anything for your update? I see you have your monthly staff report. Your file.
So your next meeting will be December seventeenth. So that's set, um, and then, um, you notice the light bulb was hit out front lower and we submitted an insurance claim on that. But I will get that, uh, there's, I did not get that. But it might be, um, sometime, it doesn't bring, it just depends on when we get somebody to reset, to reset it. So, uh, but it is a part of us. But other than that, um, so like Johnny does.
I have a question about the votes since, cuz I knew that for a while, we were waiting on, you know, the license titles checking, you know, D N R. All the red tape paperwork. So from from this on here, it looks like that's all done?
It is not all done.
Oh, it's not all done.
So it's easier, it's easier to scrap. Yeah, it's easier to scrap, give them away, they just gotta, uh, and if somebody wants to devolve here to take them, we just have to get junk titles issued. And it's a little bit of footwork to get those issued, so we don't wanna say, yeah, for all thirty junk boats that are there, we're gonna do junk titles for each one, you know, only one. It's just, we wanna make sure we know exactly because what they are. So we'll work on that and then when public works is the, the, um, lead pickup and rush pickup for the season, we'll start focusing a lot of their time on getting them.
So like, when you say which ones they want, you mean like reaching out to scrappers to see to?
Some things, yeah.
Take it for like the metal or?
Anybody that would wanna do the labor to take it off our hands, they'd have to basically issue the junk title for it. Um, or if we take it and scrap it ourselves, we could just go scrap it and not do any of that. But some of them are in different conditions and stuff like that, so.
That's how you're gonna get that information out to people who might be interested in taking.
Well.
May not be that far in the process, I just think that was the.
I don't know exactly yet.
Yeah.
I do have one one question. With the church and I saw about cameras or whatever, do you have any kind of, uh, have you considered any kind of, I guess alert, like if the sun bump went off again or something like that, especially the weather coming on? You know, a temperature alert or anything on the old church?
Well, I can tell you that we need to upgrade the quality of the systems that we have. Um, and there's, there's a few reasons why I feel that way generally. Um, so that's something for the next budget year, I wanna probably push for is just upgrading our, just our existing security systems that we have, our locations. Because they're kind of out of date, but they still work, because anybody listening is wondering. But yeah, whoever, YouTube video.
Well, it's like any kind of technology, a year or two, whatever we got here to.
Exactly, yeah, that's exactly the issue we got. There's so much quality out there now that we, it's time we just kind of invest in something better.
Well, I'm just concerned about the old church sense of not use and, you know, you could have pipe freeze or a- anything like that, or like the sun bump, you know, just awareness or is there regular schedule? Like certain times employees go check on it?
We're in there weekly, a couple times a week.
Okay.
So, um, there's usually people.
Is your plan to sell that or you have got a plan?
We have, we all, we haven't discussed that, so I I think.
Yes, a lawyer wants to buy.
That'll be something going into the year, we can look at our options somewhat.
Unless everybody's ready to just put in the one point five million, because it seems like online, that's what they want us to do, they're pissed off, we're not. We're not doing that.
But they would be able to stop.
Yeah.
Anything else to add?
No, I'm good. By the way, December, unless I'm mistaken, the December seventeenth meeting is a special meeting, which means that if it's not on the agenda, you can't talk about it, right? Mark, yeah, so that means if you have something you wanna talk about, you need to let me know beforehand, if you can please, so I can put it on the agenda.
Hey, um, Mark, do you have anything tonight?
I do not have anything.
Thank you. Mike?
Um, the whole caucuses are set for December second, it's Monday. Republican will be at the township building at six thirty, Democrats will be at seven thirty at the annex building.
I have some, can I ask some questions about caucus or is that asked individually or can I do it here?
It's public.
Okay, I did, so I, I mean, I've been to them before, but so we need to bring somebody to nominate us? Or is, are you doing the nominating or?
No, you'll just have someone to nominate you. What you need to know.
My wife's gone, but she wouldn't vote for me now.
So will that caucus information, is that something that we should post now or will we post it? We have posted the information posted here at the office, um, as far as how that works and what the goals are and things like that, so.
But it wasn't released before.
Right, right, yeah, I knew it was the goal.
One time you said, what, I'm sorry, six thirty, six thirty for the camp, and is that the township?
So, um, the public works, uh, updates will be in your monthly staff report there also. So, um, with my, um, Mike, do you have those pictures?
Yes.
Um, I'm gonna start out, um, with a positive note here. Um, I met with the high schoolers, um, Darcy there from the high school. She brought over about, I don't know, twenty or so kids, there, there you go. Um, and they come in with, uh, Mike Peters set up our tables and things, um, in the public works shed there, and they had all the baskets, um, down off of the poles. And we, um, filled them with greenery and decorations for all the poles around the village. And it was, um, that very well organized. She did a super great job with the kids and I, it was, it was enjoyable working with each and every one of them. I I had a great time with them, we had fun and got a lot of work done. We got every single basket done, uh, within, I I got down there, I think they brought in with the kids about ten thirty. And we were wrapped up easily by eleven thirty, quarter till twelve and had all the baskets done. And they, as you can see, they look very nice. And we used some of the ornaments left over from the village gardeners and we, um, cut up. We had some greenery, she brought in odds and ends of greenery. We had greenery that was taken off of the, um, tree that was donated to the village. And, um, anyway, it turned out to be a great activity with our high schoolers. And I appreciate it very much that they offered to help. Um, I'm looking forward to working with them in the spring to do the spring baskets. Um, they're gonna do that also, so I'll be working with Darcy, um, for that anticipating our spring flower. So, um, the village gardeners did it for many years and did a great job. I think they worked with the high schoolers last year also, and I I think they really enjoyed it. I know Sam Burr had mentioned that one day, one of the high schoolers was across the street from his house and they're like, hey, um, I remember working with you with them. So anyway, so, but I love working with the kids and and it's always an enjoyable thing to be able to do that. So I want to thank Darcy and the class and the kids and it, um, I I hope everybody enjoys the greenery that we have around town, so.
So I said, I'm gonna write some up and send it to you, put it on Facebook.
Yeah, there you go. Um, but anyway, I I I mean, I am going to address, um, the Christmas tree debacle. Um, I am very disheartened by what was shared with me on Facebook. And so I think it's it's time to address the misinformation that's been put out on Facebook. Um, the Girl Scout tree will be, and I want to say in quotations, highlighted, underlined it, whatever you want, their tree will be honored and highlighted at the Christmas tree lighting ceremony. I am disappointed and discouraged at the information that is, um, presented on Facebook is not true. It it has managed to make its way through the community and it just brings a terribly negative light on a great event, on our community as a whole. And I suppose we can thank Facebook and all those who like to contribute behind a little key force of warriors who like to, you know, um, keep talking of, you know, and and make it become a very negative thing. Uh, I've been in communications with one of the Girl Scout leaders, um, early on as we were planning the Christmas tree lighting event. And the Girl Scouts will be hosting a table for the community to make ornaments, which are gonna be very cute ornaments that will also be keepsake ornaments that they can put on the tree. And then after the holidays, they can come back and take your ornament if you would like. But they're also gonna be helping the community make, um, little ornaments for, um, with fern seed and things for our, um, our resident, um, birds in the community that will get to enjoy that throughout the season. Uh, the lighting of the tree, um, their tree will be part of the main event. The Girl Scouts will be doing the countdown. They will be getting to, you know, have that part of the program. They will be doing the countdown with their Christmas tree, um, for the tree lighting event. Um, having an additional tree for the event is in no way shunning the Girl Scouts Christmas tree. We're not pushing aside the Girl Scouts Christmas tree and the efforts that they put into getting that tree donated to the village. The additional decorations for the event will only make things more festive, in my opinion. Uh, the Girl Scouts tree was donated, it was, it's a living Christmas tree. It's a tree that will be a part of the village's Christmas tree event for years to come. And they should be proud of their tree and the efforts to that they put into to make it happen. And the village has been very appreciative of their Christmas tree. Making the village's Christmas tree lighting event as fun and festive as possible has always been our main goal. Um, some in the community will always have an opinion on what and how it should be done. Our goal and the many volunteers who donate their time to make it happen are only into it for the joy and the happy faces that it brings to our community. So those who choose to make the event into something negative is very discouraging. And quite frankly, it makes me very sad. This community is much better than that. During this time of year and throughout the entire year, it would be nice if people would just lighten up, spread a little happiness and joy for once. spread a little happiness and joy for once. Take it down a notch and appreciate the efforts for bringing the community together to celebrate the season and all the blessings throughout the year. That's my spiel, it's my plan. We have a lot to be thankful for in this community and it's, that's, I wish more people would focus on that instead of the negative things of the community. So, anyway, uh, other than that, that's all I have. Trustees, do you have anything to add tonight?
Uh, Stan, around December fourteenth, you can still sign up. Just Google Santa.
That's still as long as it used to be?
No, we cut it down to three.
And we do have.
So, and I should say that it's gonna, I mean, I guess maybe we already know, but it's, it's gonna, um, honor Corey Thompson.
Yes.
And we're, and we're trying to like get them to somewhere we take off, like get cop cars up and down. I mean, we've got big dreams, but I, I wish everybody would come out and support this, you know, as much as they did when, when they had the procession and all that stuff. And just be great for the community to have a great turnout, to show them how much it meant to our community. And I mean, the Thompsons have always, um, been great supporters of our race. I mean, I still remember them and their Santa onesies out there and.
Environment, environment.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, they're all. You know, this year will be a different, hopefully they'll, um, continue to bless us with, with their presence at the race.
Big Chelsea will be there maybe?
I, I'm hoping, yeah.
Darwin, Brim, Brim's around now.
Yeah.
But we, we do have a lot of, um, great, great activities coming up, the December, the, the parade.
Yeah, that Women's Club parade, which was omitted from the newsletter.
Yes, and, and we do have a new newsletter out to this, this December fourteenth as well.
Right, is that evening, right?
So.
Or is it the evening of the?
Yeah, six o'clock, yeah. So, yeah, the holly jolly down at the fire department. So, anyway, we have lots going on and, and like I said, it's, it's a great time of year and I hope everybody comes out and enjoys all that we have got going on, so, um.
You know, hazardous ways, you could have a spark on fire too.
Bring it on down.
All right, if, um, if there's nothing more to be said there, um, we will be going into executive session briefly. Um, so, I guess we agreed that, and we like.
Got something to sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, you know, the happy, mostly hard. He's got it, he's for you.
I know, I got it, I got it.
Okay.